Good morning.
Good morning.
Just to give just a moment, make sure we're on live and everybody's good in the back. All right, it looks like we're good to go. Well, it is March 26th of 2024. It's a little after nine in the morning. Welcome, everyone. Glad you're with us today. We've got a full schedule today. A lot of this will be doing some interviews with some possible candidates for our city attorney position. So, we're going to immediately move into executive session. It should be fairly long. And then, we will come back from executive session and promptly start council at 2:00 PM for our consent and then regular agenda. And so, we look forward to seeing you back at 2:00 PM. At this time, City Council will hold an executive session today for the purpose of consulting with the city staff regarding the following: pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code and personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. At this time, City Council will be in recess to executive session. All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. It's nice to see everyone here today. It's my understanding that we have some special guests with us from the Texatec Journalism School. Is that right, Ms. Walberg?
Yes.
All right. Absolutely. And Mr. Dotre wanted me to pass along his sentiment that you should run for the hills. I'm not sure what that means, but he wanted me to pass that along. But welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here. We've been in executive session this morning since about 9:00 AM. So, I'm calling us back from exec. Took a short lunch break. And so, now, we will pick back up and reconvene back into open session and start with our ceremonial items. And then, we'll move right to citizen comments and then get to our consent and regular agenda. Today, I'm pleased to have the Executive Pastor of Ministries, Mickey Echols. Mickey is with Trinity Church, and we're glad to have you here today, Mickey, if you'd step forward. If you'd all please stand, if you don't mind, remain standing for the prayer, and then Mayor Proton Patterson Harris will lead us right into our pledges of the United States and Texas flag. Pastor Echols?
I'm going to pray a few verses out of Psalm 72 and just adapt them to our context. Give your love of justice to this council today, O God. May righteousness lead each man and each woman. As decisions are made, as things are discussed today, Lord, we pray for the members of this council, for those in this room. Lord, help them make decisions that are right for the people of our community, Lord. Thank you. That as they are mindful of the poor and those in our community, that people are treated fairly, God. And, Lord, we pray for every economic engine in our city, from the small business to large corporations to our agriculture. Lord, may the economy of our city here in Lubbock, may it prosper, Lord, and may everyone in our community benefit from those blessings. Lord, we thank you for your faithfulness in that, Lord. May we be mindful, Lord, to defend the poor, Lord, to protect our children. And, Lord, I thank you for these men and women before us, God. May they fear the Lord as long as the sun shines, as long as the moon remains. We thank you for meeting with the people today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you remain standing and join us as we offer the pledge to the United States and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Thank you. You may be seated.
All right, we will now move to citizen comments. According to Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting of the council regarding a matter posted may do so. Again, I'll remind you, you've spoken before, you know it. If not, if you would please remember, you have three minutes. Jimmy will give you a warning at two and a half minutes and then a final warning at three minutes. So, as I call your name, please come forward. We'll start with David Benitez.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Hey, I just want to bring it up about the city sewer stuff, the ordinance. When y'all were talking about it and bringing it into making it an ordinance, we went to every meeting y'all had upstairs. So, doing so to become an authorized contractor, we invested about $180,000. So, I want to know after it gets done or turned back, and it probably should be back on the city. But how's that going to affect the contractor that invested? Or is the city still going to continue to sub out contractors? Because we invested quite a bit just to get on y'all's list. And that's the only reason I'm here. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
Good afternoon, council. Adam Hernandez, 7401 Avenue X here in Lubbock. I am also the Communications Chair on the Board of Lubbock Compact. And so, just wanted to make a public comment today to sort of stand with the property owners on this issue. I know that maybe at the time, a lot of you thought this was a pretty solid idea, but I've actually seen some of these estimates that have come back just for that last five feet of that lateral line. One that I saw personally with my own eyes was over $15,000 just for that last five feet. Even if you're talking about something being $500 to $1,000, we have a lot of people in our community that are at the poverty level or what would be classified as working poor, right? They might have a decent job, but any extra expense could throw that off. And so, I also think about property investors in a lot of our older areas of town. They're trying to buy these properties and renovate them and make our neighborhoods a little better. They're going to suffer pretty big with this, especially if they own a whole bunch of properties. And so, not only do I think that the ordinance should be reversed, but also, I understand the city side issues where there's a workload issue, right? I just heard from the gentleman, which gives me another idea. So, I think that the city should probably hire more crews to deal with these, but also find ways to sub out with contractors, especially those who have invested that large amount of money to be certified for this. And so, I would just hope that you all reverse that decision as well as look at funding some ways or finding some ways to ease the city side workload. And that's all I got, guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. We next have Jody Patton.
My name is Jody Patton, and I live in the Melanie Park subdivision. We were one of the homeowners that's been affected by the ordinance change. We had our lateral replaced inside the fence. It was about $1,700. And we're blessed to be able to afford that. When they went outside the fence, we called the city-approved plumbers. We didn't know, our plumber didn't know. We found out after the fact when they called to get the city out there, that we had to call a city-approved contractor. It took probably three or four days to get a city-approved contractor out there, and it was $3,500 for that last piece of line, the small piece of the line. So, double what it cost inside the fence. When they excavated the right-of-way, our line was crushed in the tire tracks where the sewer trucks or the trash trucks drive over. Not only that, the city's tap was corroded and had to be replaced. Our plumber replaced it, and we filed a claim with the city only to have it denied because our plumber replaced it, and it should have been done by the city. So, these are the questions I have. If the ordinance stands, when the, I want to know how many times the city has to replace the tap when the lateral's being replaced as well? And should the city pay for half the excavation cost to fix the tap?
Let's make sure all cell phones are turned off. I think that's second or third of the day. Let's check your phones and make sure they're turned off out of respect for All right, I think all phones are going to be off now. Ms. Patton, I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. Should the city have to pay for half the excavation cost since the problem, as in our case, was not just the private line? Will the city be proactive in fixing the taps that are broken? When we had the city come out prior to, they could not even get the camera down the main because somebody's tap is in the line, the sewer main. So, the city's not been out to fix it at all, one of our neighbors. So, they had to go through our line or our fence to see what it was, and they still couldn't determine. They thought that the line was bowed when actually it was crushed. So, that's it? It's okay. That's, no, it's okay. That was pretty much all I had to say. I appreciate y'all's time, though.
Thank you, Ms. Patton. All right, that's all we have for citizen comments. We'll now move to Agenda Item 4. Agenda Item 4 is the minutes from January 24th, February 12th, and February 27th. Excuse me. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 4.1, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Counsel, we do have a few pulls from the consent agenda. I'm going to go through those individually and turn those over to Mr. Atkinson for comments or questions. And then, if there's no other comments or questions, we'll pull those back in with consent of council and then take a vote on that. We'll start off with Agenda Item 5.2. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Item 5.2 is the follow-up from our work session back in January when we were talking about ARPA and beginning to run into the deadline, which is the end of this calendar year. The budget amendment before you for ARPA reduces the job training and the arts awards. Those are finished. The funds have been paid out, so the remainder, we're asking to reappropriate. This will increase the cybersecurity category by $9,500, and that is just a balance that approved a category back out. It will increase the allocation to public safety by $72,346, but most importantly, it will take $3.9 million to the West Lubbock Water Expansion Project, and that is that third pressure plane that we have talked about over on the far side of town. So, where did that collection of dollars come from? Again, as in the case of the job training, the arts, those are projects that are finished or that have been awarded, and there are still funds remaining. This will take the unused funds from that. It takes the contingency item that we have held back, you know, kind of our just-in-case, as well as all the interest that has been earned on these dollars over this period of time. So, with that, Mayor, I'd take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. I think the one thing that was discussed on this with council specifically was the positive effect this would have on the ratepayer.
That's correct, Mayor. The West Lubbock Water Expansion Project will be a very large project, new pressure plane over a period of time. You'll have a pump station, the pump, the ground tank, eventually the elevated tank. This $3.9 million in effect comes off the top. Those are dollars that don't have to be recovered through rates. So, we've made the project less expensive if you were to do this.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Joy?
Question is, how much money do we have remaining in the ARPA funds that are not designated or appropriated here? What's left?
After this action today, there are none.
Okay.
So, my expectation is the council will do this again, hopefully in August. So, you have several approved projects, approved allocations that are out there. They've been designated and awarded. Those at the moment are working their way through. They're doing what they should do. As we get into that August timeframe, if there appears that there will be any left then, we will need to pull that out and reallocate it only by this council. Because if not, we run past December 31st. If there's unused dollars, they're gone. But after this action today, all of it is spoken for. The next action should be much smaller.
I think the public needed to know where's the rest of the ARPA funds, because we did have additional funds that we could move to do projects that are approved under the ARPA regulations.
Dr. Wilson?
Mr. Atkinson, just a quick question on the public safety improvement reallocation or, I thought we had maxed out our public safety money from ARPA. And if not, was there a plan for the $70,000 for public safety with this movement?
I will have to get the answer back to you on exactly what this is going towards. But yes, we were over, but we have also had the earned income, the interest money.
Okay. So, it can still go to public safety. We just, because I just thought we had talked about it. They were maxed out.
Yeah, it was $10 million total. We were slightly over 10. And Mr. Kostelich may have the answer for the 72. I just don't.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe they're looking it up. We may be able to come back to it.
Do you have an answer, Blue?
Counselwoman? The $72,000 was just purely a cleanup. So, it was just, we were off in two different categories. So, this is just reallocating, rebalancing to make it actually match with what we, what we had approved by the council.
So, Ms. Joy?
So, are you saying that these were the $72,000s from undesignated funds, not necessarily from the $10 million?
Not from the $10 million. It was just undesignated at that point. So, in our, in our reports, it was, it was $70,000 off from what council has actually approved.
Ms. Patterson Harris?
Thank you. Mr. Blue?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to ask this question, because you know, I want to be looking, want us to look at it, and you're the man. Do we anticipate that there could be some funds that may not be used even though they have been allocated? In looking at all the numbers, is there potentially some funding that might be available?
We have scrubbed through, and that's what, that's why we're finally bringing this forward. We have scrubbed. We have gotten back with the project managers on all of these ARPA projects. We think that this is what is truly needed for those projects themselves to finish them out. So, we don't anticipate anything not being used at this point, or could.
Okay.
But not anticipating.
Is there a plan for a little bit more scrubbing, maybe within the next couple months or so?
There is scrubbing, but there's also some investment earnings that will come back to us. So, we will have some of those.
Thank you very much.
Mr. McBrayer?
Actually, Blue just answered that question.
All right. Thanks very much. Thank you, Blue. Thanks for being available. All right, we're going now to move to 5.8 through 5.15, council. I think this is collective. So, Mr. Atkinson, this is a lot of insurance jargon, a lot of things we did about 18 months ago, if you recall, on some readjustments. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And that's a good lead in. Council, recall that we did go through a process to where many of our insurance policies, we bought an 18-month policy. The goal of that was to get us to where we had an April-through-March insurance year rather than October-through-September. This makes it easier and better for the budgeting. The numbers I'm about to go through, though, they are all normalized back now to a full 12-month period, and there's no more 18-month renewals that are coming. The items on your list today save the very last one, finishes the annual renewals for all of our various insurance products. Here's the good news. For this year, fiscal year 2024, the total cost of the city's insurance policies, this is all in everything other than health, $8.6 million. Compare that to last year, and it was $10.0 million. So, where is the big difference? The big difference, excuse me, is in Lubbock Power and Light, and it is related to the retirement of the power plants. So, this is capturing a portion of that. I'll talk a little bit about future year in a minute, but you're going to hear kind of the same thing. So, our biggest reduction is in the Lubbock Power and Light property, and that is because of the getting out of the generation. What else is going on? Right now, we are seeing slow but steady increases in workers' compensation, and we predict that that is going to continue. To put that in numbers, it's about $110,000 year-over-year, and we expect about $120,000 when we move into fiscal year 2025. So, we are seeing that go up. We are seeing the city side of the property, so the non-Lubbock Power and Light. We are seeing that go up. It went up by just a little over $100,000 this year, but most of that is from adding the new buildings to the property list. It's not because of claims. It's we continue to build in. You now have the police headquarters building that will come in under insurance for that. What do we predict for next year? The predictions? Down 0.1%. So, down 1/10 of 1% is what we're predicting for fiscal year 25. And again, a substantial part of that will be a roughly $700,000 additional reduction in Lubbock Power and Light on their property. So, generation, change in the business model, all of that. Other than those particular items, we're not really seeing anything that, you know, jumps out to get to us. Won't pick up until halfway through the following year, but it will by the next renewal point. You'll have Fire Station 20, and it'll come on to the city's property. So, any questions that I can answer? Then, I'll go to the last item under this, but let's get the math out of the way.
Any questions on the math? Ms. Joy?
$10 million that you gave us is what we've been paying for '23, '24. Is that correct?
'22, '23.
'22, '23. And that was on, is that on monthly? We did 18 months.
It's normalized to 12 months. So, this is going to be going forward, kind of like health insurance.
Okay.
So, fiscal year for us is October-through-September. All of your health insurances are January-through-December, but we account for that in the budget. After you've done it the first year, it all goes to 12 months. We're doing the same thing for insurance. It'll just be April-through-March when we do that.
But the $8.6 million is for?
Today.
Today. And it is going down, but it's still a lot of money. But we have to have it. Cybersecurity, it's something we didn't have to worry about before, but we do now. And we have all the buildings. We have all the different activities that go on. And I guess that's part of a positive move to ERCOT, is the fact that we no longer have to insure those generators and some of the other assets. So, I look forward to seeing it going down some more.
And if I could add one, let me go back one more year in time. So, $9.3 million is what we paid in fiscal year '22, $9.3. $10.0 in fiscal year '23, and now, we're dropping to $8.6. So, we're going to be below where we were two full years ago on insurance, most of it because of generation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Any other questions on 5, yeah, 5s?
That goes through 14. I've got 15 if you're ready.
That goes through 14, yeah. Right. Now, you're jumping to 15.
Okay. Item 15, this is a professional services contract to do our insurance appraisals. This is not Lubbock Central Appraisal District. This has nothing to do with any of that. This is trying to keep the best and most accurate information we can on our property so that we have good insurability, and when we go to market, we get the best rates possible. Industry standard is to do that every three to five years. We did it in 2020, so this is year four. It is a contract in the amount of $60,000. The company's name is Kroll. They have worked for us before, so part of the relatively low cost is because they've done this work before. This will help us as we keep going back to market.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Any questions on 5.15? All right, we will now move to 5.43. I believe that's next on the list. Mr. Atkinson?
Item 5.43, this council is a new one. So, most recent regular legislative session, there was a change in the law that would allow a property owner in your extraterritorial jurisdiction to request to be released from that ETJ. Certain restrictions to where they can't, but generally speaking, almost anywhere in the ETJ, they can ask. That's what you have today. This is for Kendrick Oil Company. It's about a three-acre parcel. It's located at the corner of Woodrow and Slide, so it's in the southeast corner specifically of that. They have asked to be released from the ETJ. Complies with the law. There are no exceptions that keep them from being able to ask. Council, your position, you can either act and approve on this item, and it is done, or should you not, in 45 days, it is considered done by operation of law. So, it's on your agenda. This is the first one we've seen. It's really only one of two requests that we've seen, and the other one's still kind of spinning around out there. So, take any questions.
Let's check those phones one more time. So, in the, the information provided under 5.43, it says that this is automatic, automatically approved at the 60-day mark. And I guess maybe this may be a Mitch question. Was that 45 days from the date, 60 days from certification and 45 days from today? What's the difference between the 45 and the 60? You are now.
The 45 days is the automatic from the date the petition is denied.
Okay. Oh, from denial. So, 60 days automatic, 60 days from certification. So, if it were denied, it would happen anyway in 45 days?
Correct.
If, if the council never put this on here, it's going to happen 60 days from the date that Courtney's office certifies it.
At least, and at most, there, there's a 30-day provision in there as well, depending on when the meetings fall.
Okay.
That it could even happen before that. But it will happen by operation of law if this council does not approve it.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Joy?
Well, I find this legislation interesting, because whether we deny it or take no action, it becomes effective. My question is, is there a reason why they want to be removed from the ETJ?
Turn your phones off.
Not to my knowledge. I'm certain there is. They've gone through the process. I do not know what it is.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right, we'll now move to 5.51. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you. Item 5.51, council, is related to your impact fee program. The resolution in front of you will establish a policy to allow developers to be credited for their impact fees assessed in a service area, that's key piece, in a service area, for all developments being constructed by a developer within the same service area. Previously, we looked at that as only adjacent developments. So, this policy instead will say, no, if you're doing a participation project, and I'll come back to that, in a particular service area, A, you can apply your credits from anywhere within A that you may have generated. Why do I think this is a good idea? The best and the least expensive way the city of Lubbock can encourage roads to be built is to do developer participation agreements. In those agreements, and there is one on your consent agenda today, it's for South Quaker near Liberty High School. In that participation agreement, the developers will pay 70% of the cost, and the city's cost is capped at 30%. So, we're at 30 cents on the dollar to get that road built. This change should encourage developers to come in and do more of those developer agreements. We'll get more roads built faster, capped at our 30% participation. The way the impact fees work, if they're not given back as a credit, they go into a bucket. Every bucket's got a letter on it, Service Area A for this particular example. We can allow that bucket to fill up, and the council can expend those dollars anywhere within A at their choice. Council, if we fund roads out of that bucket, you're funding 100% of the road. And if we can encourage developer agreements, again, we're going to get more roads built faster and for 30 cents on the dollar. This allows the developer, then, to recoup as much as possible for what they have paid on their 70%. for what they have paid on their 70%. Take any questions you may have.
Ms. Joy?
I'd want to know if this has been discussed with the developers' group?
I personally have discussed it with one development company, yes. Not the group as a whole.
Not the group as a whole. Okay, thanks.
I may just point out, I think with the discussions on this, I think this is the law. I think what we're doing is because the statute is fairly new and in some ways not ambiguous, but not extremely well-written, I think what we're doing is just stating it as a fact within our city. Would that be a first statement as policy?
I believe so.
All right. Any other questions on 5.51? All right, council, is there any of these that have been pulled that you would like removed for a specific vote? Are we good with keeping them in consent? All right. Motion to approve 5.1 through 5.51. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. All in favor of approval of 5.1 through 5.51, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0 on consent. We'll now move to the regular agenda. We'll start with 6.1. Council, we have seven public hearings. As in the past, I'll take these individually. We'll start with Ms. Sager. Let her give us basic information, open the public hearing, and then once the public hearing is closed, we can ask questions more thoroughly of Ms. Sager or of the applicant. Ms. Sager, 6.1.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Item 6.1 is a zone change request from low-density residential SF2 to heavy commercial HC. We sent out 12 notifications, receiving zero responses. This property is located west of I-27, south of Regis Street. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It is currently vacant, and there is a commercial development to the east and north. Current zoning is low-density, single-family SF2. There is industrial park to the east and heavy commercial to the north. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. Sure.
Just a second. Come on, just.
So this is the aerial view with the commercial development to the east and north. The current zoning is low-density, single-family. There is heavy commercial to the north and industrial park to the east. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the currently vacant site and surrounding area. This is a graphic provided by the applicant, as well as a survey of the property provided by the applicant. This is a proposed site plan. The future land use map designation for commercial land uses is consistent with the request for heavy commercial zoning. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. The property will be along Regis Street, which is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sager. Stick close. All right, council, now hold the public hearing for Agenda Item 6.1. If you have not been in a public hearing or have been a part of a public hearing, we will open the public hearing for all those wishing to speak in opposition first to the agenda item. You can come forward, state your name, and then you will have time to present your case. Once those in opposition are done, then we will move to those in favor of the agenda item, and then I will close the public hearing. We will take more discussion and then a vote on that agenda item. All right? So at this time, I will now open the public hearing for Agenda Item 6.1 and ask anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to approach at this time. All right. Seeing none in opposition, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 6.1? Yeah, come on forward.
Kevin Watt, West Star Commercial Realty. I was just, I presented the case, and if you have any questions about this, it's basically not going to be residential out there. So that's it.
All right, Kevin, you may stick close if there's any more questions of council. Thank you very much. All right, any other parties wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 6.1? All right, we will close the public hearing as to Agenda Item 6.1. It is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.1? Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. All right, is council, I have any questions of Mr. Watt, questions of Ms. Sager? Mr. McBrayer?
Yes, Mr. Watt? Could you give us an idea of what your intended use for the property is?
Right now, we're just trying to sell it, and we can't sell it as residential. So we just went for a better zoning so we could develop it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions of Mr. Watt, questions of Ms. Sager? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I do. Mr., was it Watt or Watt? Mr. Watt. So on the rendering that you provided us, that was just?
A preliminary.
Just a preliminary?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was going to say, it looks to me just to be like a bunch of parking spaces. So that's why I was curious. Is there a particular commercial business or developer that you're seeking?
We've looked at everything from warehouses to another restaurant or, you know. We're leaving it pretty much open. We were going to build some buildings out there, but building costs were pretty high for spec. So we're really just looking to sell the land and give it, you know, sell it with good zoning on there so that they can develop it, where we don't have to spend 90 days waiting.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. All right, any other questions of staff or the applicant? All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on 6.1? All in favor of approval of 6.1, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. All right, Ms. Sager, we will now move to 6.2.
Item 6.2, Zone Case 2565G. The applicant is DLC Designs LLC for JGK LLC. The request is to rezone property from heavy commercial HC to neighborhood commercial NC. We sent out 18 notifications, receiving zero responses. This property is located south of 26th Street, west of Texas Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There is additional commercial in the surrounding area. The current zoning is heavy commercial, and it is surrounded by heavy commercial. The future land use plan designates the property for commercial land uses. And here is a photo of the subject property and surrounding area. The future land use map designation for commercial land uses is consistent with the request for neighborhood commercial zoning. The proposed zoning change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and the surrounding area. Location is along Texas Avenue, which is designated as a collector street. Staff recommended approval of the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. All right, same song, second verse. I will now open the public hearing as to Agenda Item 6.2. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to 6.2? If so, you may approach at this time. All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in favor of 6.2, you may approach at this time.
Good afternoon, council. Amanda King for DLC Designs and the applicant. And I'm available if you have any questions. The primary reason for the zone change is the previous way that it was set up. You have to have a lot of 100 feet, and their lot is 90. So in order for them to develop the property, we just had to adjust the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 6.2? All right, I will now close the public hearing as to Agenda Item 6.2. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.2? Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. All right, are there any other questions of the applicant or Ms. Sager on 6.2? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I have a question of Ms. Sager, so she can kind of refresh us on all the new information. Neighborhood commercial is what?
So neighborhood commercial encompassed the former C1, C2A, and C2 zoning districts. So it is more of your general retail, light retail districts.
All right. Thank you so much. I was racking my brain over here trying to remember, so I appreciate you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. All right, any other questions of staff or the applicant? All right, seeing none, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of approval of 6.2, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? 6.2 carries 7-0. All right, 6.3?
Item 6.3, Zone Case 3497. The request is to allow a neighborhood infill overlay on properties zoned SF2. We sent out 78 notifications, receiving two in favor, two in opposition. This property is located at the corner of East 29th Street and Walnut Avenue. Here's the response map showing the two in favor and two in opposition. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. The subject property has a single-family home and is within a fully-developed, single-family home neighborhood. Current zoning is SF2. The future land use map designates this property for low-density residential land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Additionally, here is a photo of the illegal accessory dwelling unit the applicant has started on the property. The proposed neighborhood infill overlay is not in conformance with the zoning ordinance. It would permit an accessory dwelling unit on a lot of 6,000 square feet or greater. However, accessory dwelling units are currently only allowed on lots that are 10,000 square feet or greater. The proposed neighborhood infill overlay is not compatible with the surrounding area as this neighborhood is completely built out and not in need of infill development. The location is along East 29th and Walnut Avenue, both of which are local streets. The definition within the Unified Development Code of Infill means redevelopment of a vacant property surrounded on a minimum of two sides by existing development. Staff recommended denial of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial by a vote of 1 to 7. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sager. All right, I will now open the public hearing as to Agenda Item 6.3. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to 6.3, you may approach at this time. All right, seeing none, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of 6.3, you may approach at this time.
Good afternoon. My name is Martin Mesa, 2409 Hickory Avenue, Lubbock. I came in according to 2402, East 29th, for a zoning change. The lady I represent bought the property, I believe it was in October, and we're talking about a two-car garage that was already worked on or remodeled. She just needed it to get finished, basically tape and bed and texture, stuff like that. So, but we need that zoning change to be able to finish it out and later do what she needs to do with that property. If there's any other questions or questions?
Still in the public hearing. Mr. Mesa, if you have any other statements, if not, we may call you back up for some questions. But this is just your time to speak if you'd like.
Okay, no, no, I'm done. It's just we're looking for that zoning change to be able to finish that out.
I got you. Thank you. You might stick close. We may have a question for you, okay? Thank you, Mr. Mesa. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of 6.3? All right, I will now close the public hearing as to Agenda Item 6.3. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there a second? All right, thank you, Mr. Massengill. All right, we have a motion in a second. I believe Ms. Joy may have a question for you, Ms. Sager, maybe for the applicant?
I heard the applicant say that it was not finished out. Now, I'm seeing a picture or a photo that looks like the exterior is. So I'm assuming that the inside is in need of completion, is what he's telling us. So if we deny this request, then what happens?
The unit cannot be used as a dwelling unit. It could only be used for storage.
Okay. So it will not have to be knocked down, anything like that. It just cannot be used for dwelling. Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Ms. Sager, is that it cannot be used for a dwelling for rental purposes, or it can't be used as a dwelling in any way, shape, or form? I mean, it was already a converted garage, is what I'm reading from the evidence, correct?
So there were no permits pulled through the Building Safety Department, and I can see that a complaint came into the Building Safety Department in December of 2023, that there were renovations ongoing without a permit. Google Street View only goes as recent as April 2023, where you can clearly see the garage door still in place. So sometime between April and December, the renovation started.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
What did the individual plan to actually use the dwelling for?
I do not know if they intended it as a rental or for a family member.
Or for storage?
No, their intent is to have a dwelling unit.
Dr. Wilson?
Ms. Sager, looking at the picture that we're looking at right now, it looks like there's no parking available if this was going to be a dwelling unit. It's on the street. And if you were to pull a car right there, you would block the sidewalk. Is there anywhere else on the property that they, using it as a dwelling unit, they were going to be looking for parking?
They would be required to pave a third parking space on the property, and I believe at the Planning and Zoning Commission, the discussion was it would be paved at the front of the property.
But it's not done, any of that's not done as of right now?
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Fair. I'm directing it to whoever it hits, I guess is what I'll say.
Mr. Mesa?
I'll begin by making my comments as he comes. I am very familiar with this neighborhood. This falls within District Number 2, the area, one of the areas where I'm responsible. I received a phone call from one of the citizens who, I believe you received the letter back and was in opposition of this actual dwelling unit. Their concern was, and you can tell me, Mr. Mesa, how far you are in finishing up this particular location. Was there, there was a garage door here on the west side of this garage. Am I correct? So that garage door was removed, a door was put there for exiting and entering the building.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll call it that. I also noted that you guys had placed windows and all of that good stuff.
That was done before we started. Before she bought the property, that was done. So what she wants from us is basically to finish off the, it's been framed. She wants to finish off the minor drywall that needs to be done and tape embedded and texture, basically. The aesthetics of it, not, we don't do no more framing. We're not adding on. We're not doing nothing. No adding windows. It's just a question of finishing that off for her.
What was her purpose?
Rental.
Okay, she was going to rent it. Is it just a one room, or is it, have you put up a wall so it's a?
It's two rooms and then the living room and the kitchen.
In that, in this building?
Uh huh.
Wow. And what's the square footage on this particular building?
Uh, I don't remember right offhand the square footage of it, of the building itself.
Okay. Uh, I am very concerned because, and I guess I would gather that you yourself have not made contact with any of the neighbors to ask them how they feel about this type of structure.
Okay, since we've been there, I mean, we've had plenty of people slow down and look at it, but nobody ever questioned what was going on.
Okay.
And, uh, like I said, all the exterior, the interior walls were up.
Yeah.
We're just finishing it off.
And neither you or Ms., uh, Torres went around in the neighborhood to let people know what you were doing?
I personally haven't.
And you, do you know if she did?
I have no idea.
Okay. And I'll say again, because I, I was contacted by some citizens who are homeowners within that neighborhood, and they are very much against any type of overlay in the community and, uh, having any type of structures like this to be used as dwelling places. So if, uh, and I'm just sharing with you because they are definitely against this happening in the community. And with that being said, I will not be able to support that this take place here at this location.
Because in the first meeting, they came up and their biggest problem was the, the parking. And Ms. Torres has taken steps in getting it measured out for a driveway for two cars. Uh, concrete driveway, it's not installed yet, it's not.
I see a, I see a, a, a concrete pad like to the, to the north of this, this structure, is that?
And it stands now, I think there's spaces for three cars.
Okay.
And, uh, but we were told we needed spaces for two more cars for the back house.
Okay. Okay.
And that's in the process, that's, that's, uh, that's the biggest complaint that we got was the parking. They didn't want off-street park, on-street parking and.
Okay. Do you understand that if this is not approved today, that you can no longer go ahead with what Ms. Torres is requesting of you at, with this structure?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of what would happen if it does not pass.
No, since our first meeting, we stopped whatever we were doing there.
Okay, good, thank you.
And that's.
Okay. That's all I have, I just wanted to make sure that it was known that the citizens are, that I've spoken with and who contacted me before I even knew that it was, it would be coming, that they're opposed, they don't want to see this in their neighborhood. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. Mr. McBrayer?
Uh, Mr. Mesa, so have you, uh, is there any plumbing installed in this facility?
Yes.
That has been installed?
Mm-hmm.
And, but you did not pull any permits for it?
No, we, like I said, when we got there, when we started the process, all that was already in there.
The plumbing was there too.
So, you know, we got there and the city inspector dropped by and, uh, you, you need to stop work, so we stopped and I came back in here, tried to get a permit. And here we are.
Okay, and I had a question for Kristen.
I think what I'm reading there in the backup, Mr. McBrayer, may be that, uh, this was already a converted garage.
Yeah, kinda.
And then I think they, uh, maybe an intent to use this as a rental, and I think that may have been, the problem was created and no permits were pulled. Is that, is that kind of your understanding, Mr. Mesa?
Yes, I mean, uh, when she bought the property, it was already converted.
Right.
Right now, it's just basically a storage for the people renting the front house.
All right, thank you.
And that's basically what it's being used for, is a storage.
All right. All right, any other questions, Mr. Mesa, before we, uh, have Mr. McBrayer ask Kristen a question? Ms. Joy, did you have a question of that?
Quickly, uh, is, is the kitchen functional?
The plumbing's in there, uh, it needs, we need to put the appliances in, but.
Okay, so just the plumbing?
Mm-hmm.
The HVAC, have heating and air?
They're gonna have window units.
Window units?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mesa, I think that's all for you, appreciate you being here today. Uh, Ms. Sager, I think Mr. McBrayer has a question for you.
So what is the square footage of this cur- lot currently?
So I texted the planner who handled this case, seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet is the accessory dwelling unit. The lot is a little over six thousand square feet.
So it doesn't meet the six thousand square feet?
It, it's a little, yes. It, the lot itself is more than six thousand square feet. But that's why they need the neighborhood infill overlay, because normally you need a ten thousand square foot lot in order to have an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, if it was ten thousand square foot or not, uh, or more, that wouldn't be a problem for the, okay, thank you.
Ms. Patterson Harris?
Thank you, Ms. Kristen, I, uh, I have a question. Now, let's say that this does not pass today, what has to take place with regard to this structure?
So we would not issue any permits to complete renovations as an accessory dwelling unit, and the use could not be, it could not be used as a dwelling unit.
Would there be, uh, any, um, requests for the work that has been done to be removed?
That would be up to the Building Safety Department, I'm not sure how they would handle that.
Okay. I was just saying, because I, what it sounds like is that this was being used as a dwelling place even prior to the work that Mr. Mesa has started doing. And i- if, I guess when you look at that, that's a very dangerous situation. So, uh, my concern is that, and I guess we could just handle that through codes. I was just curious, is there would, if there would be a request to reverse the work that has been done?
I do not know for sure, but I can find out.
Please do.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. All right, on six point three, we have a motion in a second. No further discussion, all in favor of approval of six point three, please say aye. All opposed by nay, nay. All right, motion fails zero to seven. All right, we will now move to agenda item six point four. Ms. Sager, you're just like, uh, up and down, up and down.
Up and down. Item six point four is zone case thirty-two ninety-eight E. The applicant is Hugo Reed and Associates for Ford Development. Their request is to rezon property from industrial park IP to neighborhood commercial NC. We sent out fifty-one notifications, receiving two in favor, zero in opposition. This property is located west of Indiana Avenue, south of a hundred and thirty-eighth. Here's the response map showing the two property owners that responded in favor. The small strip to the west of the property is the Kelsey Park Homeowners Association. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There's a commercial development to the south, residential development to the west. Current zoning is industrial park. There's neighborhood commercial to the north and east, heavy commercial to the south and residential to the west. The future land use plan designates this property for residential low-density land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here are graphics provided by the applicant, showing the lots that are to be rezoned on the left, and then a proposed site plan on the right. The future land use map designation is residential low-density. While the proposed zone change to NC is not in conformance with this designation, it is appropriate at this location along a thoroughfare adjacent to other commercial zoning. The proposed zone change request to neighborhood commercial is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. The property is located south of a hundred and forty-first, which is a local street, west of Indiana, which is a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. All right, I will now open the public hearing for agenda item six point four. Once again, if anyone here is, uh, wishing to speak in opposition to six point four, you may approach at this time. All right, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of six point four, you may approach at this time.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members, I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates, we're at sixteen oh one Avenue N. Um, and Ms. Sager laid it out very well, we are on some commercial frontage, fronting Indiana Avenue in front of our East Wick at Kelsey Park Development. Uh, yes, there's a self-storage facility just to the south of us and undeveloped retail to the north. We requested and received IDP zoning under the old code back in twenty-sixteen. The reason for that was, is at the time, we had a, and we envisioned sort of a, a light sort of office warehouse, you know, where maybe it was a contractor shop or something like that. And the code at the ti- at that time didn't allow us to do that, so the IDP zoning was that mechanism to allow us to do that. And I, I stated at Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll say it again here, in our company, revisionism is the state of the art. You know, we've been through a number of, uh, sort of concept changes on this property. The little site plan that you saw in your backup is our, we think it's our, finally, our idea. We're currently zoned IP, that's great for us, for all the land uses that we would like to do. However, uh, this is very similar to a case you heard a couple back, where, uh, the lot size restrictions in the IP zoning doesn't allow us to come anywhere close to doing what we want to do with respect to this property. The IP zoning has very large minimum lot sizes, you know, those types of things. The NC commercial is a better fit for this location because it allows us to do this little business park and divide it into smaller, now code-compliant, uh, platted tracks within the UDC under NC zoning. Still do what we want to do, um, and frankly, I think the NC is really a better fit for this location anyway. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Terry. May stick close. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of agenda item six point four? All right, I will now close the public hearing as to agenda item six point four. Is there a motion to approve six point four? Thank you, Mr. Massengo. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right, I have a motion in a second on six point four. Are there any questions of Terry or any questions of Ms. Sager? Ms. Joy?
Ms. Sager? I'm assuming that there's screening on the, uh, west side where it abuts to the alley, yes?
Yes.
What kind of screening?
They, there will be a buffer yard required, a landscape buffer yard. Um, I believe it'll be a minimum of ten foot, and they can choose to do that with a screening fence or without, and increase the density of the vegetation.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions of Terry or staff? All right, I have a motion in a second on six point four, all in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, six point four carries seven zero. All right, wrap back to you on six five, Ms. Sager, thank you, Terry.
Item six five is zone case twenty-nine eighty-five E. The applicant is Seventeen Services LLC for Cody Craig Custom Homes LLC. The request is to rezon property from high-density residential HDR to single-family district SF two and neighborhood commercial NC. We sent out one hundred and twelve notifications, receiving three in favor, two in opposition. This property is located north of a hundred and fourteenth, east of Frankford. Here's the response map, showing the responses in favor and in opposition. Here's an aerial, aerial view of the subject property. There is existing residential to the north and east, and some additional, uh, residential to the south. The current zoning is high-density residential. There is SF two to the north and east, office zoning along a hundred and fourteenth, and auto urban commercial to the west. The future land use plan designates this property for medium-density residential land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here's a graphic provided by the applicant. The intent on the SF two zoning is to construct townhomes, and the intent for the commercial zoning along a hundred and fourteenth is for various commercial uses. Here's another graphic provided by the applicant, showing the lot layout of the townhomes and the commercial tracks. The future land use map designation is for medium-density residential and a portion of commercial land uses. The proposed zone change is moderately compatible. The neighborhood commercial zoning is along a major street where it is appropriate, and the SF two will be adjacent to other SF two zoning. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be compatible with the surrounding area. A hundred and fourteenth Street is designated as a minor arterial, and El Cart Avenue is designated as a local street. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. All right, I will now open the public hearing as to agenda item six point five. If anyone here is wishing to speak in opposition to six point five, you may approach at this time. All right, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of six point five, you may approach at this time.
Hi, my name's Kaylee Hernandez, uh, currently work with Seventeen Services, located at fifteen hundred Broadway Street, Suite two oh three, Lubbock, Texas. And I'm here if you have any questions.
All right, Kaylee, you might stick close, all right? All right, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of six point five? All right, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing as to agenda item six point five. Is there a motion to approve six point five? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Right, I have a motion in a second. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant, um, or Kaylee is here, or of staff? All right?
Real quickly, Kristen, did you say a hundred and fourteenth is a minor arterial?
I believe it is designated, the, the twenty-eighteen master thoroughfare plan designates it as a minor arterial, yes.
That'll probably change.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. All right, I have a motion in a second on six point five, all in favor of approval of six point five, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. We will now move to six point six, Ms. Sager.
Item six point six is zone case thirty-four ninety-eight. The request is to rezon property from industrial park to heavy commercial. We sent out twenty-four notifications, receiving zero responses. This property is located west of Frankford Avenue, south of Fiftieth Street. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It is currently developed with a multi-tenant center, surrounded by other commercial development. Current zoning is industrial park. There's additional industrial park to the south and west, light industrial and heavy commercial to the north, and additional heavy commercial to the east. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. The future land use map designation is for commercial land uses, so the request to heavy commercial is consistent. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and appropriate with the surrounding area. The location is along Frankford Avenue, which is designated as a minor arterial, and Fiftieth Street, which is designated, that is not correct, is not a local street. It would also be a minor arterial by the master thoroughfare plan. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Kristen. All right, I will now open the public hearing as to agenda item six point six. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to six point six, you may approach at this time. All right, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of six point six, you may approach at this time. Is the applicant or representative of the applicant here? All right. Me too.
My name's Johnny Zarizua, uh, just representing my, my friend here, as, because of the barrier, language barriers type thing. And so he'd just like to see if we could get this set up so he could go ahead and get the business going, because he's rented it out about two months ago, three months ago, and been paying rent on it, so to speak. And so he'd like to go ahead and get it, the zone changed, so we could get, get in there and get started.
Tell me your name one more time.
Johnny Zarizua.
All right, Johnny, I think you came to P and Z as well, is that, is that right?
Sir?
You also came to P and Z, is that correct? The last time you had to come here?
Yes, I came in the last time, yes.
All right, thank you, Johnny, you may stick closer, we have some questions.
All right, thanks.
All right, anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of six point six? All right, I will now close the public hearing on item six point six. I believe, uh, Ms. Joy had a question, Ms. Sager.
Ms. Sager, this request is for the suite out of how many suites?
I do not know the total number of suites, you are correct, it is for an individual suite. We reached out to the owner multiple times to see if they would change their request to the entire property, and they would never give us a response.
So the owner, I mean, he owns the whole thing? Okay. Sometimes that creates a problem for us down the road. That's my only concern, is that there are other suites, and you know how people say, oh, well, it's okay, I did it, you can do it too, kind of thing? So, that's my only concern.
Dr. Wilson?
Uh, Ms. Sager, the reason that they're requesting the zone change is just because the type of business, they, he wants to run a massage parlor out of there, and it's just not allowed under the current zoning, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just for clarification, thank you.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I just wanted to check, I think Mr. Zarizua, is he not representing the owner?
Yes, he is.
Okay, and I thought I heard some questions for, that might be posed to the owner with regard to something. Am I hearing, did I hear something wrong?
The owner, when he submitted the application, only asked for the zone change on one suite within the property.
Okay.
We reached, staff reached out to him more than once to see if he would change his request to the entire property, and he, we never would receive a response for him, from him.
And Kristen, just, I guess, is the owner here, maybe?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, on the applicant, it says hot and juicy seafood. Is that the owner of the entire property? Just this, one rent, lease, I guess, tenant of this suite? So I guess when they say owner, does he mean the tenant? Because he said he leased it out, I guess that's what I'm assuming here. Johnny? Johnny?
The property owner did sign the application, and that is who he reached out to.
Correct. But you are here representing the tenant of that suite that wants to open the massage parlor, is that right?
Well, he is renting hot and juicy restaurant, and he wanted to open the one, I think it's about three doors down, back to the south of that shopping center. He wants to open that one as a massage parlor for his mom.
Okay.
And so that's what we're looking at.
All right, I think I understand now, thank you. Ms. Patterson-Harris, is that clear as mud?
Yeah, I just, I just knew, it sounded to me like there were questions for the owner, and that's what I was thinking.
The owner of the building, we don't know who he is, I don't know who he is.
Okay.
But she tried to contact, I guess, the owner.
But the owner of the business is here.
The business is, they're already there, but we're trying to open another one, three doors down.
Yeah, and the gentleman who owns those businesses that you're talking about is here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing that, that if...
No, I'm just here as a translator.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, Ms. Joy?
The owner of the property is Texas Brothers LLC, and then it says Judd Porter. That's what it says on the application, that's what it is.
All right. Did we take a motion and a second on 6.6? Didn't? Huh. Did I close the public hearing, Courtney? Thanks. All right, is there a motion and a second on 6.6? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Is there a second? All right, thank you, Mr. McBrayer. All right, any other further discussion on 6.6? All right, all in favor of approval of 6.6, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. All right, Ms. Sager, one more, 6.7.
Item 6.7 is Zone Case 2573T. The applicant is Park Hill for UMC Health System. The request is to rezone property from high-density residential to auto urban commercial. We sent out 114 notifications, receiving zero responses. This property is located south of Erskine, east of Chicago. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There is an existing UMC rehabilitation center on the property, residential to the west, additional commercial to the east, and additional residential to the south. Current zoning is high-density residential. There is a medium-density residential to the north and west, and additional high-density residential to the south, and auto urban commercial to the east. Future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. The future land use map designation for commercial land uses is consistent with the request. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. The existing UMC medical facility was developed in 2022 on the subject property, and the applicant is requesting the zone change in order to accommodate an expansion of the hospital. The property is located north of Colgate, which is designated as a local street, west of North Side Road, which is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote with two recusals, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. All right, now, I will open the public hearing as to Agenda Item 6.7. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to 6.7, you may approach at this time. All right, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of 6.7, you may approach.
My name is Joanna Anthony with Park Hill at 422285th Street, representing UMC and Encompass Health. And like Kristen said, we are doing an addition to this building. It's 16,000 square foot and 26 beds, and under the previous zoning, it was Apartment Medical, which rebuilt, care was permitted use, and now, under the UDC, that changed, and so it's a permitted, or permitted use, but we have to stay under five acres, and our property is over that. And so just to get the building permit and do this addition, we're looking to rezone. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Joanna, you may stick close, we may have questions. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 6.7? All right, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve 6.7? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. All right, are there any questions of Ms. Sager, staff, or of the applicant here? Joanna with Park Hill. All right, seeing none, all in favor of approval? All right, I'm sorry, let me get up my podium. Ms., Dr. Wilson?
So, looking at the aerial shot, and I don't know, Ms. Sager, if we could go back, just a quick question on the expansion. Are we going out, are we going up? And is there still going to be adequate parking where y'all are building?
So, I'll let Ms. Anthony address the expansion question. In terms of parking, the Unified Development Code reduced the parking requirements, so they will still be in compliance.
Okay.
And we're going north, and so you can see the grass area to the north of the building. We're pretty much infilling that with the expansion, and then we're also adding additional parking to the east between our building and the other UMC building. So we're adding more, it's mostly accessible parking for residents and their family members, and then infilling that, that whole grass area with the building. And so it'll all stay at this existing level.
Perfect, thank you.
Ms. Joy?
This is a complex, the adjoining building is their financial center, is that correct? Immediately to the east, that's UMC's financial center? And then this is a rehab facility, is what I call it?
Yes, Encompass is leasing it, and so UMC owns the property, but is run by Encompass, and so the buildings are separate uses and separate entities.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions of the applicant, Ms. Sager? Or any comments or discussion on 6.7? All right, all in favor of approval of 6.7, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion 7-0. All right, we're going to take about a 10-minute, 12-minute break and reconvene from break back at 3:30. We are in recess. All right, welcome back from break. We are now bringing up Agenda Item 6.8. Mr. Atkinson, I believe we are starting with the presentation on 6.8?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. John Turpin has got a brief presentation, and we'll turn it back to the council.
All right, John, you're up.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We have some data that we wanted to show y'all. Can y'all see my presentation yet? It's on the computer. Oh, there we go, there we go. We have some data and just a couple of things that we've gleaned out, so council members have asked us for information, and we've gleaned a lot of information from that that we wanted to present to y'all. So on Chapter 22, what's up for consideration today? Why is this not working? There we go. So the first thing I wanted to go over was the ordinance definitions. A sanitary sewer line, that is a publicly-owned pipe or conduit designed to collect and transfer, transport industrial waste and domestic sewage. A sanitary sewer lateral line is a privately-owned sewer pipeline that carries wastewater from a home, a business, to the public sanitary sewer main. Private line ownership shall be from the home to the connection at the Y or T, or the tapping saddle actually connected to our pipe. So this is just an example, this is an example of a 15-foot alley. Really what we wanted to show y'all here was, what, how long is the line in the alley for each type of alley that we have? We have 15-foot alley and a 20-foot alley. So this is primarily just for residential. There are a few commercial facilities that are connected into alleys, so this is really looking primarily at residential. But on a 15-foot alley, I'm showing it splitting down the middle, because really what we found is it's somewhere between six to eight foot into the alley. So it's almost right down the middle in most cases in a 15-foot alley. On the 20-foot alley, it's slightly different, and the reason for that is a TCEQ rule that requires us to have so much separation from a water line to a sewer line. So on one side of the alley, you have five foot, off of the fence line is the sewer line, on the other side is your water line that's five foot off. So that provides us with 10-foot of separation between the two. The requirement is nine foot by TCEQ. This is a percentage of work done by activity by our pipeline department. Just wanted to show y'all the amount of work that goes into this, the repair of private service sewer, or sewer service lines. The 41.6, that is not all of the work that is put into that. So on every one of these activities that is on a pipeline, you also have the backfill activity that must occur, usually afterwards, because when the pipe breaks, it inundates your soils, we can't go in and fill that void in that day, because usually it's filled up with mud, so we have to let it dry out. We come back at a later date and address the backfill. So approximately 52% is spent on repairing home sewer lattles. The homes sewer lattles, so from, in the alley, the portion that's in the alley from the fence to our main, 52% of our work was spent on that. So, pipe type by work order, this is an important discussion, and I think one of our citizens that just got up talked about having a crush pipe. And what I want to let y'all know is, if you get a chance, go look into Orangeburg Pipe, if y'all want to. Orangeburg Pipe, it's not good pipe. It's been around from about 1940 to 1970 is when this was put in. I learned a lot about Orangeburg Pipe here recently. It was put in during, right after World War II, they had shortages, so this is why they, it became a thing. The problem is, is it only has about a 30-year life, and once it starts failing, its failure method is crush. So it falls apart in a crush method. And that's what I wanted to let y'all know. 84% of, so we looked at 100 lateral lines at the request of Mr. McBrayer, and that gleaned out that 84% of these failures were on Orangeburg Pipe. We also had one vitrified clay tile, and we had a couple of cast-iron pipes. And then 13%, we had as unknown, our guys didn't tell us what the existing pipe material was. It is probably most likely Orangeburg as well, so.
John, right there, that percentage of the 100, was that on existing, or was that on just failures? So 100 that you looked at on a work order, those were work orders of a failure?
Yes, all of these are work orders that we got called out.
I'm just trying to clarify that.
To assist, yes, sir.
So if you take the 13%, we're looking at over 90% or 95-plus percent were probably Orangeburg failures because of old pipe?
Most likely, yes, sir. That's what we saw. A little bit, I can explain some more here. We have some more data that we gleaned out of the system. 38% we show Orangeburg failure. That's where, the only explanation was a crushed Orangeburg Pipe. The next one is roots in the line plus Orangeburg Pipe. Orangeburg does a terrible job of keeping the roots out of the line. In addition, the roots will actually crush the line itself. It doesn't take much, and any disturbance around this Orangeburg, and it can crush the line. So, some of the ones that we are really responsible for, if it happens, tap failure. That showed up as 11%, so 11 out of the 100 was a tap failure. Unfortunately, we get these calls where there was no issue. We got called out, we dug up the line, there's absolutely no issue with the line, we cut off, we took off the 90 on the pipe, and we camered back, the clog was not on our side, it was sitting in the backyard. So that was, that was seven. We had three that were main line break issues, so we had an actual, either a clog or a break on the main line. We had three that showed up as damaged by contractor. What I do want to say is, this ordinance doesn't address damage by contractor. That's addressed by Chapter 37 in a right-of-way ordinance. So that's handled by a totally different chapter or ordinance that says if the contractor damages it, they're going to be responsible for it. Our right-of-way group, Diane, who's sitting in the back, she does a great job of policing that and making sure that that gets taken care of anytime that shows up. There's, if we do the work, we do a subrogation report, we get paid back by the contractor that damaged the lines. Uh, let's see, so we had, like I said, the cast-iron pipe, the vitrified clay pipe failure, and then lastly, two that probably should have been handled by a plumber. Clog line due to grease. We took off the 90, and, because there was nothing wrong with the line, and what we found was a lot of grease in the line. And then clog line due to wipes. So I'll just, while I'm up here, I want to, flushable wipes are not flushable, so let's not flush them, please. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
All right, John, go back just to your pie chart, please.
Which one, sir?
Right there, that'll work. No, you took 100 that you looked at the pipe type by work order. What was the timeframe for that? Was that within the last year, was that the last 24 months?
This is within the last two years, sir.
Okay, so 24-month cycle, you took 100 randomly selected?
Yes, sir.
All right, and?
Yes, sir, this is from, so where Marsh and Sharp Freeway takes its angle off of the West Loop, all the way over to Indiana, and then we went south all the way to 50th, and then all the way to north. So I captured an area that was essentially encompassed by Marsh and Sharp, West Loop, Indiana, 34th and 50th.
And was this residential only, or was any of this commercial?
It captured commercial and residential, and apartment complexes that are brand-new in the area, so it captured all. So it does look at an entire area.
All right, would you go back again to your slide, showing the 15-6, the alleyways? Keep going. Right here. So currently, if we look at this alleyway, you show this as a property line. Well, I guess, I'm just, and I'm going to ask some questions I may know the answer to, and council may know, but I think it's good for the general public. Who owns this alley?
Who owns the alley?
Yeah.
It's a public right-of-way. It's owned by the public. So any public utility can go in the alleyway.
Right, so do we maintain as a city, do we maintain and mow the alleyways?
No, sir.
All right, whose responsibility is that?
The homeowner.
All right, do we have code enforcement for people that want to put things in the alleyway, like mattresses, and put trash in the alleyway?
Yes, sir.
And whose responsibility is it to keep those areas clean?
To keep the areas clean? I mean, many times we have to go out and pick up mattresses when they're dumped, but code enforcement, it does come out and can tick it if they can figure out who has done it.
Right. So when we're looking at an alleyway, this is not what I think people in the general public have stated, well, this is the city's property. It's not the city's property, would you agree?
That is correct, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. I just wanted to clear- All right. I just wanted to clarify that because I think that's been one of the things is it's ours, it's the city's, we own it, you have to fix what you own. And which leads me to my other point, if, and, and go to maybe Ms. Patton brought up the fact that this line was broken. There are a lot of reasons why lines break, right?
Yes, sir.
Give me some of those reasons.
Damage by contractor, you could get a
Age?
A, a line bore just even too close to some of these old lines. It doesn't even have to directly go through the line if it's, because anytime you have a bore, it displaces soil. And when you displace soil and you put weight on that line, it could crush the line. So.
Sometimes it's just age, right?
Age, age is for sure. If you, like I said, I watched some videos and for sure, after about thirty years, this stuff just, it falls apart. And even what I, I learned was if you snake this material, it actually causes damage to the inside of the pipe. It will tear up the inside of the pipe and make it to where it becomes almost unusable and will start blocking up the line on the Orangeburg pipe.
Tree roots?
Yes, sir. Tree roots.
What about if it's caused damages caused by a dump truck? One of our sanitation trucks? Whose responsibility is it to repair that line if we caused the problem?
If, if we damaged the line, it would be our responsibility. Anytime there's damage, it would be our responsibility.
Or if a contractor damaged the line, it's their responsibility, as you stated earlier.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
This new ordinance doesn't change that, right? If it's the city's responsibility, if they cause a break in the line, they're still responsibility for, responsible for the repair, correct?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
If a contractor still destroys the line, then the contractor is still responsible for that repair, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Right. So that doesn't change with this new ordinance. What's changed is what you've defined from the property line to where we come to the center tap, whether it's five or fifteen out, that's what changed was that personal property and what you've defined as personal property becomes the responsibility of the homeowner. Is that correct?
The, the repair of that, yes, sir.
Okay, and that's whether or not that is a rental home? Correct? Still the responsibility of the, of the owner? Or if it's commercial property?
That, that is correct, yes, sir.
So again, just bringing up questions, if we revert back to the original, the original ordinance, would we, do you know when the specific date was that we actually went to this ordinance that we were before again? I'm trying to get some dates here, but it changed in two thousand and six, correct?
That is, that is correct, yes, sir.
So for nearly a hundred years, Lubbock was on a model of if it's your line comes to the T, you're responsible for it, right?
That is, yes, sir.
And so for roughly eighteen years, that changed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you aware of any other cities in the state of Texas or at least in West Texas? Where the city's is responsible for that personal property line from the, that ties into the T?
I am not, Mayor. We, we did look into other cities. We looked at Amarillo, Abilene, San Angelo, Levelland, Plainview. And Woolford. And Woolford actually just changed their ordinance here recently to put it on the homeowners, I believe whenever the new city manager came on board.
Well, when you say homeowner, it's not just homes, right? We're talking about commercial property too.
Yes, that is correct.
So the property owner, so most people are on the dime of the property owner as improvement to their property. Is that kind of, is that a fair assessment?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's all the questions I have for you right now, John. Any other council members have any questions? Oh, he had questions at the end of his slides. Any other questions on his presentation? Mr. Brayer, question on the presentation?
Uh, calculation of activity, fifty percent, fifty-two percent on the laterals. Was this a man-hours calculation or a dollar calculation of how did you, percentage of work done, how did you calculate that by the hours spent, man-hours spent?
This is actually just taking all the percentage, so we have a work order system. And they looked at everything that we did over the year and put that down. I, I'm not sure exactly. I, I did not produce this pie chart. So I don't know if it was done by man-hours or exactly how it was done. My understanding is.
Seems like someone does know, though.
It's a percentage.
He popped up very quickly. Say that again.
It's a percentage of work orders.
Work orders, but not necessarily man-hours.
Not necessarily.
You have any idea what the man-hour calculation would be? Would it be similar to this or any way of knowing that?
We don't have that data available. I, I can speak to a, a, a part of that because I did look and glean into how long it takes us to perform the private sewer part. And it was anywhere from three to five hours just for the repair. Normally, that was what we were looking at to mobilize, get to the site, make the repair. And then we had to come back and do the backfill after that, so.
Any idea how much the backfill time was?
I would, I would guess somewhere in an hour.
Okay.
And, and one of the things that we, we did also have is we had about a thousand forty of these annually, which equates on average to four a day that we were receiving.
And you, you named or you described the part of Lubbock you were looking at to pull those random work orders from. And that was mostly like central Lubbock?
Yes, sir.
Mostly my district mostly, so.
It is certainly.
Because that's where the Orangeburg exists a lot. Isn't the older districts in town?
It, it is across many districts in town, sir. Yes. Orangeburg is, is representative, any, any, anything that was probably platted in the seventies and prior to the seventies may have the presence of Orangeburg.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martinez Garcia?
You mentioned that if a, if a truck, solid waste truck damages, then we do the replacement. How many trucks actually, or how many damages or projects as a result that we have to do last year because of the solid waste trucks?
I am not sure we have had that information. So during my sixteen-year career with the city, I'm only aware of one. And it was a, a mistake by our pipeline crew not putting tape across the alleyway when they were working on the line. And so our solid waste vehicle went through and actually drove over top of the line and broke the line when they were going through the alley. What I will tell you is I have lots of experience through construction. And anytime we do roadway projects and we rip the pavement off the top, you have to worry about what's underneath that pavement. Such as specifically our utilities or what's underneath that pavement. And so if we don't have at least three foot of cover, we will take those lines and lower them. And so all you have to have is three foot of cover and you won't break those lines. And we've done that on numerous projects across the city.
How about other contractors that were, if they've damaged? Have we had to repair their damage? I know most of the time they're paying for that, but have they with their vehicles created additional problems for us or?
I, I'm not aware, ma'am. I, I can't answer that.
So last year, how many incidents did we have where a solid waste truck damaged somebody's line?
I, I am not aware of any, ma'am.
Not, okay, so there were none or none that we're aware of. How about the year before? None that we're aware of. I know I heard like a couple had, that we had had a couple, but I don't know in what time period. I just want to make sure because, you know, that was another rumor that, you know, the solid waste trucks were the reason that there was so much damage. But we know that the bottom line, it's the Orangeburg pipe that we're having problems with. And we started doing the repairs and we already know that we still have problems, but if somebody has that type of pipe and they have a problem, we will come and we will fix that. Is that, even with this ordinance?
So, so under the current ordinance, what we've been telling the plumbers is we want them to fix the issue so that the homeowner gets back in sewer service. And then we will put it on our job orders. Not in an emergency fashion where we have to show up the next day, but we will place it on our job orders so we can go address that pipe and replace it. And the, the primary reason there is because the Orangeburg is actually a, a, a way that we can get intrusion of dirt. And because if it breaks, then that stuff can get in our lines. And so we do want that replaced out of our system as well.
I've caught, I've heard it be referenced to as the asbestos of pipes. Not good. Not in the same fashion, but just the damage that it can cause.
Asbestos? So we primarily have asbestos on the, the water side.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Joy?
Do you calculate when you were preparing your charts, from January one of twenty-four, when this ordinance went into effect, to the present, how many calls have you received? And how many work orders?
Um, so January eighth is whenever we handed it all over to the, the plumbers. Timeline wise, we coordinated with the plumbers back in May. And then we had an additional meeting with the plumber. So from the time in May when we thought we might move to this, we let them know so that they could start letting their, the citizens know as they're talking to them. And then in October, when we finally got the ordinance passed, we had an additional meeting with them and said, hey, we're, we're going to go ahead and do this for an additional ninety days so that y'all can continue to get the word out. And as any, as, so every time anybody calls in a clog, it has to come from a plumber. And so we had this entire time, let our dispatch know if a plumber calls in, we need to let them know about this. We need to get the word out. We need to tell people that this is what's occurring. And that's, anyway, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm go, can you, can you re-ask, ask your question, ma'am? I apologize.
I think the question was, do you have a number? Ms. Joy was asking about the number of calls or work orders you've had since January eighth.
We have been keeping in our system where we get calls in and we're told that we have the Orangeburg pipe. I cannot tell you. So is that what you're asking, ma'am? I apologize.
No, I didn't ask you about the Orangeburg pipe. What I asked you was work orders since January the eighth of twenty twenty-four to the present.
For this type of work?
When they, when someone call, well, what are we here about, John? We're here about the sewer ordinance.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
So when someone calls in and you do a work order, how many have you had?
On the repairs, we've been, those have been on the plumbers. We have not been going out and.
You don't have any idea?
We haven't been doing those, ma'am.
Simply put, like, like John's mentioning, since the January, since this went into effect, it's, it's not a, per this ordinance, that's not a city job responsibility. So we do not have, the answer would be zero because we are handing those over to the licensed plumbers as, as the ordinance requires. That answer your question?
That does.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Dr. Wilson?
And this may be a question for Mr. Atkinson as well, and I don't know if we need to do that more in discussion, but what does it cost the city? What was it costing us annually to repair the lines? Do y'all have an estimated number?
I actually have John's notes. I don't know if he's got them pulled up. So, John, if you don't mind, I'll kind of start in on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Two-year average, two-year average. So the year of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we did one thousand and forty-two of the replacements. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, roll that year up for twelve months, there were one thousand and seven. We averaged between eight hundred thousand and one million dollars per year doing the sewer lateral replacements outside the property line. That is our staff and material. So it's staff time, material cost. We don't charge equipment to it. So if you did, it would go up just slightly for that.
Okay, so looking at that and where I'm going with this is, so for the city, we'll just say a thousand repairs a year is what we're spending, a million. So that's about a thousand bucks per line. So what we're hearing from people calling in and emailing is, oh, I'm getting this bid for fifteen thousand dollars for nine thousand. I mean, it's been all over the place, from a thousand to fifteen thousand. So do we know, have we talked to any of our contracted, like really what does it cost from the private, private side for a plumber to come in and fix that line? And now I know, so I, I honestly wasn't aware that we had this huge diversity in the alleyways, the wider alleys where one homeowner may have fifteen foot and one may have five.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I assumed, which you should never assume, but I assumed they were all centered. So I could see where there should maybe some variability there. But do we know really from a private plumber what it's going to cost on average?
We, we called the plumbers and we did set up a spreadsheet to look into that. We got, and it was a very wide-ranging cost. We saw anywhere from six hundred dollars. We had several that were under a thousand. And then we had some that were up around ten thousand dollars. And I think that's, does speak to what some citizens are, are calling the plumbers and if, if they don't call all of them, they're, they would certainly potentially get hit for a very large bill.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martinez Garcia?
I had a plumber here, just in case. Mr. Benita spoke earlier. But also, we have a citizen that is here that also mentioned, he has concrete in his alley. So the costs would, would differ if it's, has nothing versus if there's concrete.
Yes, ma'am. So I can, I can speak to the concrete and, and to our new subdivisions that do not have alleys. Those are newer subdivision. They have PVC. And I have looked and tried to find where we have had to go out and repair these for a maintenance reason. There hasn't been. When we have had a work order, it's been because they were hit by a contractor pouring through the alley on concrete alleys and out in the streets.
I have one more question or comment, but I'd like Wood to step up if, if you don't mind, just because I think the other part of this is not only are we spending a ton of money for private property, but also we're taking staff away from doing city work and we're getting behind. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, this, this pie chart says, says a lot. It is, like we mentioned, work orders, it's not necessarily time. So as we work on water main repairs or whatever, depending on a water main repair, that may take two or three days to repair a water main. So what you're looking at here is work orders. But yes, while we are spending and of course it's taking about two to three of our crews and we have about seven crews or eight, eight crews depending on our staff load where we are, working on this sewer lateral issue. So as far as valve maintenance, you see on here exercising valves. We're at one point three percent of our work order. Fire hydrants, you'll see fire hydrants out of service. It's a matter of getting staff time available to get to those so that we can make those repairs. So it, it does get into our annual daily workload.
Well, I think I, one of the comments that I heard just out in the public was, well, get more staff. Is it that easy, Wood, to just get more staff?
Well, staff costs money. So, you know, it would require additional staff if we want to continue with our pipeline maintenance and make sure that we're doing that side of our workload. So to get more staff is more than just a staff person. That requires a backhoe, that requires trailer tow that backhoe around, requires the, the crew truck to carry them around. So there is a capital cost to get that infrastructure in place to, in addition to this additional staff.
And then I just want to make one more comment, and I'm sorry, Mayor, but I know that there was one individual that had rental property that was grandfathered because how she had actually made a connection with the city before this ordinance actually went through.
Yeah, we had some that we were working on. So the deadline, as John mentioned, January eighth, January eighth. You know, it's a hard deadline, but if we had some in our system that we were already working on, we continue to complete those jobs.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McBrayer?
So I think you said about eleven percent were because of the tap failure. And so that was kind of one of my questions. I, this actually happened, you talked about a concrete alley. I, I'm in an old part of town, I had Orangeburg pipe, but a tap failure under concrete. And so this was back before, this was back when we were supposed to be responsible for it ourselves. But once they got in there and found out it was a tap failure, the city paid for it. So when you get in and find, what, what causes tap failures? And if you get in there and you find it's a tap failure and a problem with the Orangeburg pipe as well, that it's decomposing, you know, what is the bigger problem?
Sure, the tap is, is and always has been the city, city portion, even under the current ordinance that we're on today. Irrelevant what, what happened today, the one that we went back to. The tap is a city.
And if the tap fails, it doesn't matter what material leads up to the tap, right?
So the tap's a saddle and so the saddle's on our sewer main. And so that portion, if that does fail, that's, that's on the city. We will repair that.
Okay. But if it's an Orangeburg pipe leading to a tap, would you go in?
That would be the lateral.
Yes, the lateral.
Under the current ordinance, that's the, the adjacent property owner's responsibility.
Would they just be? Would they just be paying for the replacement of the materials? Because all the digging had to be done to replace the tap.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a unique situation if both of those were broken. And we would, you know, we would be there, and so would the private plumber, and we'd just have to work that out on who's going to backfill and who's going to take ownership of that. You're right, we would, we would be required to backfill, I mean, excavation and backfill to do the tap, so we're already there. So, I would assume that's just something that we would take care of.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. McBrayer. All right, any other, I mean, we've got questions, we've got the presentation. We've had time for discussion. Any other questions right now? All right, we have a, an ordinance. I'm sorry, Ms. Patterson-Harris. And I apologize, it's happened to Dr. Wilson. My screen is not running timely, so.
Oh, no, no, no problem at all. You gave us some figures as to what it was costing or could potentially cost residents, homeowners, property owners. And I think you said we could be looking at anywhere from $600. Is that what the bottom line was?
The cheapest I found was $600, ma'am. And that was for up to a four-foot-deep pipe. And then they charged, the contractor that I talked to charged an additional $100 per linear foot of vertical depth. So, as you went down, you got to just charge an additional $100. That was the cheapest.
And in all fairness, we don't set those prices. Those are the private plumbers that set those prices, so.
And is there something out there that says, okay, if you're doing this type of work, it is understood that this is the base rate? Or what have you? Like with doctors, you can't charge more than, is there anything that says that this is what you have? So, it's just up to any, any Mr. Jeff Plummer or Mrs. Jeff Plummer to set those prices?
Yeah, I mean, these, we don't set the plumbers' prices, so that would be theirs. Obviously, we'd advise everybody to shop around. When you, when you choose a plumber, as with anything that you do, buying groceries, shop around. But those are, those prices that the plumbers charge for this service is not something that we set.
Yeah, I, because my biggest concern was the cost. And it just sounded like it was like way out there. I just had a friend who replaced the water line and had to take it from his home out to the alleyway. And it was a different price. So, I, that's, do we have a, and I know we may have talked and called and got those, that information, does anyone have a receipt or an estimate?
I gave one to somebody, I gave two over to somebody. I have one, not for, I'm going to email it.
I'm going to email Jared one for over 15,000.
I mean, because that, that's my deal. And I get concerned with it's such a wide range of cost. And I'm just thinking, if somebody said that they were going to charge me $15,000 for something, you know what, you feel me? If I can say it like that. So, that's my concern is, is that we want everything and all citizens to have the work done appropriately and as cost-effectively as they can. But I have a big issue when somebody's trying to pull an okey-dokey on the citizens. That's my issue.
Agreed.
And it sounds like that's some of that going on around here. I'm just curious and would love to see something in black and white, green and purple, or however you print it. Because I'm concerned, that bothers me. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. All right, let me go ahead and go back to the ordinance. This ordinance put on by Councilwoman Joy and Mr. Massengill that we have under Agenda Item 6.8. Is there a motion to approve 6.8? And again, 6.8 is basically a reverter. It would go back to the original language prior to the change in October of 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, there is one addition to that ordinance that was not in the prior ordinance, right at the very end of it. I can find it for you real quick. No, it's not the publication.
Routine repair?
No, it's not that. When I looked at it, there was something, I looked at the highlighted version.
Mitch?
Maybe Amy or Mitch has that. Was anything added to it legal? Kelly, okay, all right.
All right.
Take it out. Move to approve.
All right, thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. All right, so now, do we have discussion? Any other questions of staff, questions of Mr. Atkinson? I know we've had some, but we will move forward towards conclusion with the vote. Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, Mr. Atkinson, I mean, I kind of, I'm very, very conflicted about this ordinance because I see the reasoning of why should my neighbor have to pay for my property and using property taxes? I very much see that reasoning when you own that property. We ask our neighbors right now if they butt up to a easement or a right-of-way that they mow it. I mean, I completely understand that. What I don't like and what I agree with, with Sheila, is the variability in the pricing to repair these. And in my brain, I keep going back and forth of what is right for everybody? What do we use public dollars for? You know, how do we make this maybe even more of a compromise? Because what it seems to me, if you look at it logically and with the most common sense, is it's actually much cheaper for the city. It, when you look at it per number. So, if we just guesstimated and said, in the middle, you picked $6,000 with that huge range of what plumbers are charging, and we did 1,000 a year, you know, that's $6 million, not the million we paid. But I also see the side of, why is everybody paying for each individual, your neighbor's line? So, if we could come down to a different type of compromise to where we can have a set rate because the city workers are doing it, which I still don't like that. I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to throw ideas in my head to, because my concern is, is that with this type of line, knowing there is essentially a defective type of line in older parts of our city, that it is going to be our poorer parts of our city, older homes, which is going to be more expensive for those people. And I mean, it's a lot. If somebody gives me a bill or an estimate that's $10,000, even for me, as a physician, I go ouch, where, you know, I'm going to have to come up with 10 grand cash? It's a lot. And so, that makes me worried for people that are in our lower socioeconomic groups to be able to come up with that in an older part of the city where that pipe is going to be traditionally versus the newer homes, which maybe have PVC now. So, I'm very conflicted about what to do about this. And I'm wondering if we don't need to take some more time to maybe figure out some type of financial compromise to take it away from where we say, I'm paying for my neighbor's line. It's always going to be the city's responsibility, but also help and figure out the financial component. Any thoughts on any type of middle ground that this might be best for everybody?
Thank you for the question, and a lot of points, 100% agree with. There is a huge variability. Lady in the audience gave me two estimates a moment ago. They're on the short side of an alley, from what I can tell from here. I'm not going to call out where they are or whom, I want more time. For $2,000 a foot. We get extremely large main lines buried 20-foot-deep for $275 a foot. Maybe other complications, I don't know, but expensive. And as John said, we've seen them, you know, come in at $60 a foot. So, it is variable. One thing that we discussed and ultimately didn't pursue, you know, we wanted to get a couple of things accomplished by doing this. We wanted to get our crews back to being able to maintain the main side of the system. Number two, we wanted customers to be able to promptly get that repaired, pick up the phone and call and have somebody come out. They couldn't do that previously. Just for sake of discussion, 1,000 buck average for the city to make one of these repairs. Would it be possible to put together a compromise that says, you know what? We'll provide $1,000, I don't even know if this is legal. Mitch may reach over and hit me here in just a minute. If you want to bring your private plumber to do that, we'll maintain the ordinance such that you have that option. And that's the credit, maybe, that you would, you know, you would get against that. It still doesn't speak to what they got charged on the other side. That's the weakness in how I've formulated that idea. So, maybe with time, we could do better. The city can't and shouldn't control costs on the private side, period. We all know that.
For sure.
And I think that's where the rub is starting to come.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martinez Garcia?
I too am conflicted, and I think the other part, and I do want to point this out, if I'm not mistaken, that we do offer assistance for low-income homes that could not afford this if this happened. Is that true, Jarrett? We have a program that could actually help folks. So, I think that's important to point out. And then, you know, in talking about the plumbers, because you heard Mr. Beneath has, he's already made this big investment. And, you know, how did we, are we still, have we continued to make our plumbers that might have missed the memo that they can still be added as contractors or follow the process? I mean, I feel like we still need to do that work with the plumbers. Are we doing that, Wood? John?
Yes, and in all fairness, we don't approve plumbers. We're permitting plumbers in the right-of-way. I mean, we use the term approve, but we're not saying yes or no, a plumber can do the work. If they're a licensed plumber, they're working in a public right-of-way. We want to make sure they have the proper insurance as they're working in the public right-of-way. So, that's all we're doing. The permits are free, they have to carry a bond, but it's not a bond per job. It's just to have that permit and then, so that's our list. All a plumber has to do is come in and show they have a license, they're a licensed plumber, and they have the proper insurance, and we'll get them on the list.
Thank you, and I think just to add one more thing is that, you know, public education is vital to projects or ordinances like this, especially when we make these changes. And I don't know if we did due diligence in making the public aware and what the cause is of a lot of this. I know that the Water Department does a lot to educate the community about not throwing grease down a pipe, about, you know, all these different things. And I just feel like we really need to work a little bit more on public education because we're missing the mark. And I think that's important. And also, you know, I just really, I feel like it's a tough thing because on one hand, we are addressing an issue that is going to impact the citizens that aren't having the problems. And, you know, I don't know. My thing is that we're all paying for a private issue. But at the same time, we do need some equity. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Mr. McBrayer?
Yeah, I guess my point on this or position would be that perhaps we did make a decision in haste without all the information that we maybe should have asked for, thinking of all the consequences of our decision. So, I would think going back to the way that it was while we try to work out a better solution, a more equitable solution to address a lot of these issues and take more time to look at more issues that we never even looked at when we approved this the first time. I will say, as far as the alley is concerned, though, even though it is technically property over which the city has the right-of-way, things happen in alleys that don't happen in yards. So, it's a different situation, totally. And so, to equate problems you might run into in your yard and say, well, there's no difference in an alley, just, and it's your property. I think we do have to at least be realistic about that situation. And again, just getting a little bit more information about man-hours versus just, you know, work orders and seeing where we are on this. So, I think it's always good for us to admit we may have made a mistake and we need to take another look at it. So, I think going back to the situation we were in and then taking another look at it with more information is the right thing to do.
All right, Mr. Massengill, thank you. Mr. McBrayer, Mr. Massengill. I think I've, we squared away on our.
Mayor, I think we've got, Mayor and I both have controls here. We're trying to work the mics out here. I don't think anybody up here had any intentions of making a decision that had significant cost impact to property owners. That wasn't the goal here. The problem we were trying to solve, and hats off to staff for initiating it, is we had a response, responsiveness issue. Which the city can have responsiveness issues in several areas. But we were trying to solve that. I mean, without getting into the details, nobody wants their sewer offline, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's what we're talking about here. And it's, it's a terrible situation. And then, when your sewer's offline, and then you're trying to shop and you don't have the luxury to call everybody and shop around, and I'm not sure the market reacted the way we expected it to. I think is the simple way to say that. And we don't have any control over that and can't have any control over that. What's on our agenda today is to take this back to the point where we were before, which means we still haven't addressed the responsiveness issue, okay? And what's been talked about is, well, Jarrett needs another, or the city manager needs another crew. Well, that's just another million bucks, okay? I mean, when you talk about trailers and backhoes and trucks and personnel and staffing that, is not, you just don't do it with the click of a key. That is difficult. And, question for the city manager, does an additional crew affect the rate model?
Yes.
So, I, I could support changing it back for now, but continue to, continuing to look at this because I want us to see us at least solve the responsiveness issue. I would still like to see what the rate, the impact is to the rate model and see if we could, I agree with Dr. Wilson, find a way to, the compromise here that allows the city to be responsive, not focus on, be able to focus on the things they need to do and not, you know, empty the pockets of our property owners.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to just put this out there. Mr. Massengill, I guess they say that great minds think alike. I was kind of thinking along with you. I'm not going to tell anybody else that, though. But one of the things to be concerned with, as we say, you know, we don't want citizens, one citizen to have to pay for another citizen's issues or needs, is that as we, even reverting back now until we come up with a better way or a deeper dive and figuring this thing out, it will cost citizens anyway because the way to pay for things that, with money that you don't have is to get some more money. And that's usually through our citizens, by fees and things of that nature. So, that's just something for us to think about. I could go along and say, hey, let's, for now, let's shift the, but we've got to talk about this. And we should not, mind you, council members, kick this can down the road further than a month and two weeks because we need to have this thing decided. And I think it would be crazy for this council that's seated now and that dealt with it not to make the decision on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Ms. Joy?
Well, I've sat and listened to everybody. About two months ago, I had someone stop me on the street, someone I knew, and said, oh, by the way, I have a friend who said he had a sewer issue and he was going to have to pay for all of it, all the way to the tap. And I was surprised. And that goes back to this, when we discussed this, or this ordinance showed up in our books. As council members, we're supposed to read those and understand those. But clearly, there was not understanding. We may have read that there wasn't understanding. What we would normally do in a case like this, we would have some work sessions before this goes into place. We had none. I listened to Mr. Turpin say, they had all these meetings with the plumbers? Well, the plumbers, yeah, they were all in, this is work for us. And we can't depend on the plumbers to educate the public. That's our job. And we did not do that. And we did not have the discussions we should have had. I still don't have clear information. I still don't have clear information on some of these questions that I have, even though I've been listening to you all. Whether it's Orangeburg Pipe or not, doesn't matter. Sewer is sewer. I think we're playing word games with the alleys. Mr. Turpin said the alleys belong to the public. That's not true. They belong to the public, subject to whatever ordinances the city has put in place. For example, there are certain things you cannot do in your alley that are prohibited. So when I think of public, when it belongs to the public, I was talking about me, you, and that's just not a true statement. I think if you ask a lot of people, they would tell you that the alleys belong to the city. That's where the trash trucks go. That's where your dumpsters are. And that's where the utilities who pay franchise fees put their, their fiber, whatever they're, they're going to put. So let's don't play word games with this. But this is about process, and the process was poor. It is also about people. And I'm not going to use the words constituents or citizens because I don't, I don't like that. It's about people. It's about the people who live in this city, whether you rent, whether you own, it does not matter. You are a person. And for us to now take a position in our ordinance that we expect that every person can, can fix and pay for these repairs is unrealistic. Absolutely. The sewer system belongs to the city of Lubbock, and it's hard for me to imagine an alley or the sewer system without the alley. They have to coexist. But I do believe that the one person that has submitted to me what they have spent, and they, and we now say the fence, but this particular one, there is no fence. The backyard runs right into the alley. And she paid, this is not a quote, this is she paid $4,500 on one side and $4,500 on the other. This is a person who does not have $9,000 and was forced to get a loan. And I'm sure it wasn't a cheap interest rate on short-term money. So I very much think we need to back it up and do this the way it should have been done in the first place. And have some work sessions on it and have some people, people again, from this city who are also involved. And so I would agree with Mr. McBrayer, with Ms. Patterson Harris. I think this was rushed into. And you know what? It's not worth what has happened with the people in the city and reaching out to us, which is what they should have done in this case. They should have reached out to their council members, and they did. We, they emailed. I got an, an email today, another email, and they should have. And so we need to back it up, put it on a work session, done promptly, Ms. Patterson Harris, and get the, the facts and the figures. It's real hard to sit up here and it's real hard for you people to sit out there and absorb all this information when you can't see it. Now, I'm not worried about the rate model. The rate model we're in right now is fixed, and our rates are already set on the fact that as of January 1, we're not going to be doing this work anymore. And I don't know if that's in the rate model or if we're operating on the one where we're still going to do the work. But I'm not worried about rate models. I'm worried about people. I'm not worried about the tax rate. I'm worried about people. Our people pay, somebody pays, whether it's the homeowner, whether it's a rental property that has, has a, an owner, they pay for their sewer service now. And so in my mind, how do you break that down? What are they paying for? I don't know. Are they paying for some of this service to fix those lines? I don't know. But I think that's something that this council, and I agree with Ms. Patterson Harris, that this council needs to take care of the problem because we created it. My apologies to the people who live in this city for all this confusion on my part. I can't apologize for anybody else, but I can apologize for myself, for all this confusion. And it can probably be fixed, but I have a problem when we don't talk to people about an ordinance change, but we talk to the plumbers on multiple, on multiple occasions. Sometimes things we do are just not right, and this one is not.
So Mr. Atkinson, on budget-wise, what would this look like if this ordinance goes back as far as the budget's concerned?
If, if this ordinance goes back the way it was, the rate at which we're doing the work or have been doing the work in the past will go back to where it was. We will likely end up a little short through the end of the summer, September, August, September timeframe on our, our materials budget. We can take that and slide it out of another capital project that's inside of the wastewater system to do. That, that part, we'll either be able to cover that or we'll be really close. It's just shifting really a level of effort and a level of expense from one project back to another.
All right. Well, I guess I would say, unlike Ms. Joy, I am worried about the rate because I think the rate doesn't affect a few people that have to repair a sewer line. The rate affects everybody, and that a rate affects people. And those people may be on a fixed income, and they may have no problems, and that it could, that rate would affect them. I'm also worried, unlike Ms. Joy, about the tax rate because I don't want to see an increase in the tax rate because that affects, again, people. And that affects how much they have to pay on their property values and the, how much they have to pay for their rates. And so we can't just look at this as, as some instances that although are really sad when you have to spend $9,000 on a new sewer line, and some people have where, as Ms. Patton said, I think she, there was $1,500 before it got to that alleyway and then $3,500 afterwards. So somebody is not playing fair here. And so these do affect, but, but if you, if you take this away, you affect everybody and everybody's budget and everybody's bottom dollar, which again comes back to people. We have 50-plus percent of this city is owned by landlords. So 50-plus percent of the problems that your rate is being increased or potentially increased in the future to go to pay for is going to fix some landlord's personal property. This also is not just about homeowners, and I pointed that out with John. This is also commercial value, which sounds really good if you're a developer or if you're somebody that owns commercial property, because now if you have an issue, the tax dollar and the ratepayer pays for your problem to be fixed and your personal property. So I think it is worth splitting hairs about this. We don't mow in the alleyway because that's your property, that's what you're supposed to fix. If you are outside, there's, there's several instances where your property is taken care of by you as the homeowner because it's your personal property. It's an improvement. And so when we look at this, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable saying, let's increase the tax rate, let's increase the, the rate that we pay because of a few instances where I believe people may have been taken advantage of. As Ms. Martinez Garcia pointed out, we have lots of programs to try to assist people that run into these situations. And we will continue to look for ways to try to assist that. But I think this affects the whole. I think we have seen some news stories and some people that blew this up over a few instances, and I agree too that we could have done a better job of presenting this information. But I think collectively as the whole, this has been, this, the way it was done was done this way for 100 years. Nobody had a problem with it. It was accepted. Everybody else, and I'm not trying to say everybody else does it this way, so it's the right way, but everybody else does it the way that we are currently doing it. So the message we're sending is, let's take people off main projects and public works. Let's look at probably having to increase the rate and then maybe increase the tax base to pay for it on property taxes, which we know our constituents do not want. And so to me, we leave it as it is now because we took a really hard stance. And yeah, it stinks. And yeah, it's not fun to make hard decisions, but that's why we get the big bucks. And so I'm a proponent of leaving this ordinance as it is. And if council wants to explore this in the future or look for other alternative mechanisms and means to help pay for it, that's something we can certainly explore. But that's the approach we took, and that's the approach I think we should stay on. Ms. Joy?
Atkinson, you were asked about running out of money. The last time I checked, we had about $22 million in, in funds that are not appropriated, they're not, they're not meant for any project. It is cash reserves, basically. That's above the policy reserves. Is that correct?
I believe you're referring to the general fund reserve.
Yes, general fund only.
That is not near the same case for your water and wastewater fund, which is where these expenses come.
I, I understand because the way we do this with, with our, our different wastewater and sewer, they're all separate. But it's not that we don't have any cash. It's not that we couldn't appropriate it if we needed to. Does it?
I'm not sure about an inter-fund transfer from the general fund to water and wastewater. I would have to research that we can do that.
I don't want people to leave here thinking we don't have any money. That's the whole point of this. We do have reserve funds, and I understand new budget is being talked about now. End of September is when the new budget comes into place and that there'll be, there'll be budget meetings in between. I get that. But there are cash reserves.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on Agenda Item 6.8. Does council feel comfortable taking this from the dais, or do y'all feel like we need to vote? Oh. We have a motion and a second. Did you? Hold on, let me, just a minute, Ms. Joy, I'm sorry. Ms. Martinez Garcia, you had a comment?
You know, I think we're caught between a rock and a hard spot here, and I just don't feel ready to vote for this. I feel like we need to have more conversations. It is just not, we're not ready to vote.
All right, all right. Let me go ahead and move it to procedure. I think there's been some discussion of go ahead and taking the vote and then bringing this back up in a work session. Are you motioning to postpone to a date certain at this time?
I would like to postpone this and review it a little bit more.
All right. Do you have a specific date?
A month and two weeks. A, a month.
Second week of April? Second meeting in April?
I think that would give us some time.
Okay. Okay. Oh, the 9th. I think the 9th would be the first meeting in April. Is, are you comfortable with the 9th?
I'm comfortable with that because I think that would give us an opportunity to really discuss it a little more thoroughly.
Well, I'll bring up your motion. We have a motion to postpone to date certain, April 9th. Is there a second? All right. Ms. Patterson Harris gives a second. All in favor of approval of a motion to postpone 6.8 until April 9th of 2024, please say aye. All opposed? Nay. Our motion fails 2 to 5. All right, so we're back procedurally to Agenda Item 6.8. We have a motion and a second already on the table, I believe, right, Courtney? Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. Does council feel comfortable taking the vote from the dais, or do you feel like we need to vote up on the board? We would be voting on Agenda Item 6.8, which is the ordinance reverter proposed by Ms. Joy and Mr. Massengill to revert back to the ordinance that was in existence prior to October of 2023. Thank you, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem. All right. All in favor of approval of the ordinance 6.8, please say aye.
Aye.
Dr. Wilson? Yeah, aye, aye, aye. Did you vote aye?
I didn't vote aye.
Okay. Aye or nay? Did you say aye? No?
Aye.
All right. Aye? No, there was no aye. Aye, aye, okay. All right. All opposed? Nay. All right, so I have five in favor and one opposed and, and one abstaining. All right. All right, so motion carries 5, 1, 0, if that's the correct legal word. And with that, 6.8 has been handled for the time being, and it is 4:43, and we are adjourned.